Spirit to Zaraowa, Spirit to Zaraowa, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Spirit to Zaraowa, Spirit to Zaraowa, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye. Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Spirit to Zaraowa, Spirit to Zaraowa, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista. Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye, Oh Niye. Oh Niye, Vijamapoliye, Oh Niye, Akamanista.
Good evening and welcome to the Millbrae City Council meeting of October 10th, 2017. Can we have roll call, please?
I'm here, sir, but my other thing is not working.
Yeah, mine's not working either.
Okay.
I'm working.
Let's do a roll call vote. Councilmember Schneider, Vice Mayor Pappan, Councilman Lee, and I'm here as well. And Councilman Aliva is excused. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, first on our agenda, we have a ceremonial presentation, a presentation by the Millbrae Education Foundation, and I believe we have with us Maura LaBaron-Schei and Karen Batucci to give the presentation.
I'm going to go ahead and start while Maura gets our presentation loaded up and ready to go, but thank you for having us this evening. I'm Karen Batucci, currently past president of the Millbrae Education Foundation. I think we wanted to start by giving you a little bit of an update of where we are from last year's fundraising. So, as you know, the Millbrae Education Foundation is the only organization in Millbrae that can fund teacher salaries and programs at the district level in the, in Millbrae, in the Millbrae School District. And so, we have been, oh, thank you, we've been lucky enough to be able to fund a music program district-wide and also a technology program district-wide for the last few years. Last year, however, the 2015, sorry, 2016, '17 school year, we did lose some funding for the Zero Period that we were funding at Taylor, which allowed for additional music programs, including jazz band and strings. But we are very excited that we had a wonderful year and we raised, we exceeded our goal and raised a total of $408,000. Thank you. This is our highest ever amount that we've raised, and it allowed us to restore the Zero Period and then continue funding three tech teachers, one music teacher, two band teachers, and then again, the early morning band, the Zero Period at Taylor. We are also going to be able to increase professional development hours for the teachers, which is really important as well. So what we're looking at now is also, with our funding this year, we want to look into possible expansion of arts enrichment and PE time as well. So these are, now that we, you know, it seems that we've reached the point in our development where we've got so much support from the school district, we are working closer than ever with our parent-teacher associations and organizations, and so we're really looking to keep this momentum going, reach our next goal, which is $500,000 for this school year, and to be able to fund and expand our funding to cover more programs that we can restore to the Millbrae School District. So with, with that said, I was just kind of recapping the last year, but in, talking about moving forward for Millbrae Education Foundation, I'd like to introduce to you our new Millbrae Education Foundation President, Maura LaBaron-Schei.
Hello. Hello. Thank you so much for letting us join you this evening. My name is Maura LaBaron-Schei, and I have taken over the reins from Karen Batucci, although we still work very, very closely together. I wanted to back up a couple of slides just to go over a little bit of the basics for, I know there's kind of a large crowd here, just very quickly. Millbrae Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are entirely volunteer-run. About 95% of our funds that we raise every year after expenses are given directly to the school district to fund programming. The programs include hiring of teachers that touch students, that work with students district-wide, as well as district-wide programming. And so, we use that approach to work toward our vision, which is equity and student success achieved through collaborative fundraising. This year's our 10-year anniversary, and so we, as you heard, we have achieved great things this past year, we have big goals this coming year. So, right now, we're working closely with the PTAs and the PTO in town. We are working to build collaboration and relationships, and we are reaching out to families and to others with the idea that if we have a stronger education foundation, we can provide more enrichment for every student. So we're really trying to do our part to help tie the community together closely. This $500,000 goal for this year is actually a 25% increase on our goal from last year. So some days, I am relaxed, many days, I am not relaxed, but recently, I have been feeling pretty good. We've got good data suggesting that we're working well toward our goal. And the data is this: At the end of our annual drive in the fall, we actually had already received, we had already raised more than $260,000. So this is more than we've ever raised by this time in the year, and it does not come at the expense of the other parent organizations in town. The PTAs and PTO are on track for their fundraising goals. And what I take from that is that we're having a moment in Millbrae. Millbrae Education Foundation is part of what brings together the parents in our community, but we're just one part of the team. And so I think that with all of our different ways of approaching community building and working toward a great future in Millbrae, we can achieve great things. MEF is very happy to be a part of it. So, we would also like to extend an invitation to other members of the Millbrae community to join us in celebrating the work that we're doing for the students in Millbrae schools, for our community as a whole. We are having our first annual MEF Gala to benefit Millbrae students on February 24th, 2018, and we would like to invite all of you to join us. It will be a lot of fun. More details coming. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for all the hard work you do. Over $400,000 already raised, pretty impressive for, you know, fairly small school district that we have here in Millbrae, but certainly, the hard work of the MEF certainly creates an enrichment for all of our students who come up through our schools. Any comments or questions from the council? Councilman Lee?
I just want to again thank Karen for your past service. You've done more than your share, and it's also welcome to you to our president. We're looking forward to your leadership. And MEF has worked very hard, but they're not, the school district did a study a while ago, and they said that the other thing they needed was a bond measure and a parcel tax. So MEF has been doing phenomenal work and stepping up and trying to make up, but nothing can make up for a parcel tax. So I just want to thank you for the hard work you guys have been doing and phenomenal work. I just remember when we first started, we only, we raised $70,000 now, the first year, and we thought that was phenomenal. And now you're raising almost $400,000, going hopefully on your way up to $1 million in a couple of years. Thank you.
And I believe one of the MEF co-founders is here with us tonight, Councilman Lee. I'll just start the organization. Vice Mayor Pappan?
I was just going to acknowledge that. You beat me to it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation, and yeah, we look forward to the gala and continuing to work with you to help improve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the agenda overview and staff briefing, and we have with us Deputy City Manager Mark Raffelli to give the update.
Thank you very much.
I think you're going to have to get the microphone.
Sorry, the microphone's off. There. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have some updates before we get into the agenda. As you know, with the horrific fire in Napa and Sonoma, we've sent, Central has sent two fire engines up there and nine personnel, and they've been deployed. As a result of that, a reminder, as far as Sematelo County Alert Day, that was in September 26th, that is on our webpage, and it tells the community how they could sign up for it free, so in any emergencies, the county could send you a text or call your phone, whether it's a cellphone or, or a landline, and advise you of anything that's occurring. And we encourage the people to go on our website, under the City News, there's an article, and it directs you on how to do that. The other thing is, Millbrae Community Center, the Public Workshop Number Three is Tuesday, October 24th. Group Four, the Architectural Group, will be hosting the third and final meeting. It'll be held in the Chakuti Room, starting at four, and the workshop is beginning at seven. To date, we have over 800 community members who've given their ideas on this, so if you haven't had a chance to attend, this will be the last one to be able to get there, see what's, see what's going on, and also give your opinion on it. Under the approval of minutes, there were none. Our report from City Committee and Commission Chairs, there are none. Public Communications, we'll get back. Consent Calendar, item number five, the approval of special event permit for the Korean Cultural Festival, October 21st, 2017, and a waiver of facility rental fees, and that's for action. Item number six, a resolution awarding the construction contract to express plumbing for the upper lateral pilot program in the amount of $252,000, and that's for action. Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with GHD for on-call engineering services not to exceed the aggregate amount For civil engineering services and execute addenda to increase each of the West Show's associates and CSG on-call contracts by $250,000, that's for action. Item number eight, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Stepford Incorporated for information technology support and related services in the amount not to exceed $150,000, that's for action. Item number nine, a confirmation of the 2017, 2018 mayor-vice mayor rotation, that's informational. We have one public hearing. Item number 10, appeal of a planning commission decision to deny an appeal of an approved design review staff level to allow the first-floor remodel, addition, and construction of a second floor located in a single-family, R1 zoning district at 452 Lamita Avenue, and that's for action. Existing business, there's none. New business, appointments to city commissions and committees, and discussion regarding Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and that's for action. Then we have the closed session after the meeting, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raffelli. Any questions about the agenda? Councilwoman Schneider?
I don't want to pull it from consent calendar, but I have a question about the Stepford contract. The deputy city manager and I played phone tags today on that, so I just want to get that recorded, that there's some problems. Basically, when I get the spam protection email and I click on releasing it, nothing happens, and I'm not getting those emails. And they are things I want, so if we can get that fixed right away. It's been going on for the last two or three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor Pappan?
I'd like to continue item nine till all council members are present, if possible. I know it's only informational, but an opinion.
I'll agree with that.
Okay. And we also have a speaker slip on item number five, so we'll pull that from consent for the public speaker to make a presentation about that. Okay, so we have, next on the agenda is the public communication. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes to speak. You'll have the green, well, you can speak when the green light comes on here. When the yellow light comes on, you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when the red light comes on, your time has expired. So the first speaker tonight is Laurel Pasqual.
I'm here from Union City, California. There are a lot of people in California that don't support sanctuary cities or state. I read on Facebook, make no mistake, the whole idea of sanctuary states and cities is a concerted effort to aid the illegal invasion of the United States and to destroy her within. When our local government officials pick and choose what laws to break, why should anyone follow our laws? They are creating a lawless society and havoc among the people. This creates more division. Is it planned? Are you an agent of the enemy? What kind of example are you? Stand in line with the criminals, but your crime is worse. It is an act of treason. If you want laws changed, get the support of the people and go through the legal process through the Supreme Court. Our liberal educators have done a great job turning the youth against us. Look at UC Berkeley's. The liberals want free streets, speech, but they are the first to suppress speech when it goes against their agenda. In addition, it is, it isn't taking, isn't taking down the statue of General Lee in Charlottesville the same as trying to erase history? Why now? Why didn't Barack Obama do it when he was in the eight years of service? How would you feel if an illegal alien got your child's spot in college or took your job for less pay? For those who failed to learn, our past are doomed to repeat it in the future. Mao's Communist China destroyed books, art, religion of the Western world and replaced it with his Bible called the Little Red Book of Mao. Why? To brainwash the people. He sent the educators away so he could turn the youth against him. Doesn't anyone see the correlation here of the current times and the youth being corrupted by our educators? Mao got neighbors to spy on neighbors and report on them too. No privacy or freedom in present-day China. We have wiretaps, computer attack, drones. Hello, big brother. Mao also became a demigod. No religious freedom there. Our governor basically has opened the doors for anyone to come and stay. We can be invaded. It could be China, it could be the Nation of Islam. If our federal immigration, we have federal immigration laws for a reason, mostly to protect and maintain the safety of our citizens. We do not know the loyalty of the people that come here illegally or their criminal backgrounds. This socialist communist agenda strips the very freedoms that our country stands for. The first thing the communists do when they take up is to take the people's weapons so they can't fight back. That goes against our right to bear arms. Then they take the property of the wealthy and distribute to the poor. This destroys the American dream that someday you own your own home. Most of the salary will be used to support the government, death by taxes. Are you giving illegal alien rights because you're so insecure for votes? What do you expect when you yourselves defy the federal government?
Your time has expired. I'm sorry. The next speaker is Wyn Gersich.
Hi, my name is Wyn Gersich, and today's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. And you know what's so wonderful about my birthday? I'm 62 years old, I'm a senior citizen, and I have both breasts. And you know what caused breast cancer? The chloramine in your drinking water, fluoridation. And you guys think that's okay. So you've got all these women running for the cure of breast cancer when they're sucking on that water that's causing it. Why on earth would you want to put poison in your drinking water? And when you think about communism, this is kind of amazing to me because I just want to tell you this: When, when I was young, in 1973, my mother was the head of Army Communications, and I said to her, I said, "Mom, do you think the communists would ever bomb us?" And she said, "No, they don't have to. They'll infiltrate without fire and a single shot, corrupt the youth to go against the government and take over from within." I said, "How are they going to do that?" "Through the schools and the churches." And she said, "Look around you, what's happening?" And this was during the Vietnam time, right? And it was kind of funny because she said they're going to get people on drugs and do this and that, and it was also MKUltra when they had everybody smoking dope, and it's all happening again, isn't it? So what's happening now is that our city councils belong to the ICLEI, which is the International Council for Local and Environmental Initiative, under the United Nations. And I sat here one night when I actually heard the sheriff sit here and tell everybody that he wasn't going to abide by our federal laws, and that he wasn't going to take immigration status, which really kind of blew my mind because I never thought in my life I'd hear that. But then again, we've legalized murder. In this state, look at all the people. You know, when you legalize murder, and you know, most communist nations, they kill the population, and under Agenda 21 depopulation, that's why they put the poison in the water to give you cancer. And then we have Governor Brown, who put fracking fluids on the drinking water into the okafer's over there in Kern County, which water are crops? And now they're fracking in Monterey, which water are lettuce crops? Then we had Senator Weso and Assemblyman Quirk, who wrote a bill for utility pole cellphone towers at 5G radiation. And then we had Senator Pan, who did forced vaccinations on all our children, so they're injecting them with aluminum in these vaccines, so when you walk under these radioactive cellphone towers with microwave radiation on your head and you've got aluminum in your brain, you know, this causes brain tumors. So you know, when you look at every communist nation, you know, look at, look at, look at what Chairman Mao did, you know, look at Russia, look at all these things, they killed their people. Stalin killed a ton of people, didn't he? Our government's getting away with this. This is legalized murder. So when they put fluoridation, which doubles breast cancer death rates because chloramine causes breast cancer and so does fluoride, I would think, if anything, you'd want to impeach Jackie Spears. Jackie Spears wrote the bill to fluoridate the rest of this, the state when they had enough money to do so, and this is right when Mr. Bush, the first Bush Senior, President Bush, got us into the New World Order. And that was in 1995 when she wrote that bill. So now they're fluoridating the rest of the state, and I helped get it stopped, and Sonoma, you can get it stopped here.
The next speaker is Robert Macario, Macasio?
Good evening. This is concerning Landing Lane flooding issue. This is just to get on the minutes. I appreciate the reply.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, I am. Okay, hello, Mr. Key, basically, this is a response, hello, Mr. Keelim. I appreciate the reply at the special council meeting from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM Tuesday, September 26th. All five council members told the city manager to make the flooding problems of Landing Lane Neighborhood a council priority. The special council meeting was not televised, but during the regular meeting at mark 1.16.50, please see below link to September 26th City Council meeting. It was repeated that the flooding of Landing Lane Neighborhood is a council priority, and such council direction was to continue working with the neighborhood. The city of Millbrae would continue to be the entity to coordinate meetings with the neighborhood and all government agencies such as SFO and Caltrain. In the August multi-jurisdictional meeting with SFO and Caltrain, all of us were promised maps of the area showing the various landowners and what might be needed in the MOU memorandum of understanding signed by the various landowners committee to a set schedule of, say, 10 years to keep the water system free of plant material and garbage. At the moment, we are dealing with the maintenance of today. What are the midterm goals to keep this maintained and long-term goal? What capital improvements can we do? FEMA Community Rating System has a good program, but we would need FEMA direction. In 2013, it was stated by you that the city of Millbrae started CRS but never finished. It would be a great, it would be great to see Millbrae finally complete this project that was started. FEMA also has grants such as flood mitigation assistance programs that may help. Thank you for your reply. From Mr. Keelim, "Good morning, Chris. Please be advised that the staff is not meeting regularly," this is in response to this that I've just read to you. "Please be advised that the staff is not meeting with regularity with, with private residents on any specific issue. You were at the September 26th City Council meeting, and you heard that this is not a city council-directed project at this time. Therefore, there is no funding and is, that is available to continue on this project. As I advised in my previous email, Millbrae staff is continuing to work on removing sediment in the bores underneath the train tracks, and the work is expected to be completed before the end of October in preparation for the winter storms." We were promised maps, we were all to get together, I believe, Anne, you were involved in this as far as listening to it. We were just about on the doorstep of getting all the maps together from SFO, from Caltrain and such, so we could find out who is responsible for what areas, so we could get this maintenance going and keep it underway, because, I mean, we've had a lot of flooding problems on Landing Lane as far as sewage and just a lot of problems.
Thank you, Mr. Macario. And our Public Works Director is here this evening.
I see that.
And I'm sure he'd be happy to chat about it.
I can really wait.
And all of your comments have been read into the record. Okay, the next speaker- Okay, the next speaker is Paul Herell.
Good evening. Again, I just came back from my Zumba class, so bear with me. I feel for you guys. So Meadows School will be having their biannual E-Ways coming up on October 21st. And that means that we'll fundraiser for Meadows, and I'm going to give each one of you a copy of what's up. We're looking for anything that has a plug on it, that's electronics, anything that has a plug on it, that has electronic from phones to TVs to microwaves at, for October 21st. It'll be from 10, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Meadows at 1101 Helen Lane. October 21st, it was a Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herell.
You still got time?
It's in November. Maybe, Wayne, you can make a comment about it later. Okay, thank you. We can make a comment about it later in Council Comments. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. We do have a speaker slipped on item five. Um, I think it's one of the organizers of the event who'd like to make an announcement. Can we do that first and then vote on the consent calendar all at once? Okay, the next speaker is Sun Okwang.
Hi, my name is Sun Okwang. I'm from Peninsula Korean American Parents Association, and I'm a board member and a project, uh, program manager for the event. And we are planning to have the fourth Korean Culture Festival on 20, October 21st on Saturday from 1:30 PM to 4:30 PM in the Library Room A and Checkery Room. So, um, and we'll have a food caterer starting at 1:00 PM too. So yeah, everyone is invited, and feel free to bring friends and family to the event.
What was the date?
October 21st, 1:30 PM to 4:30 PM.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Huang. We look forward to seeing you there. Okay, so on the consent calendar this evening, we have items five, six, seven, and eight. Item nine has been continued to a future meeting. Can we have a motion? And a second? Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Pappan and a second from Councilman Lee. Your votes, please. Councilman, vice vote, Councilman Schneider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Can you read, can you, for the record, announce the, uh, the vote?
The items on the consent calendar passed unanimously.
Except for item nine, which was continued.
Except for item nine, which was continued.
And the abstention from Councilwoman Oliva, who's not here.
Oh, your mic's not on. That's why he's...
This mic's on. Oh, it's present here.
Okay, I think you're going to have to repeat yourself.
Okay. The items on the consent can, calendar passed unanimously with Councilmember Oliva.
Absent.
Absent, except for item nine, which is continued to the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is item number 10. This is a public hearing, Appeal of a Planning Commission Decision to Deny the Appeal of Approved Design Review at 452 Lomita Avenue. And we have with us Public Works Director, or sorry, Community Development Director, Tanya Ward, to give the presentation.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. This appeal stems from a June 5th Planning Commission decision to uphold a staff-level design review application. In this particular case, two building permits were received by staff and processed differently by code in the effect that the first floor addition was approved by Wright, and the subsequent application was reviewed as staff-level design review. The staff-level design review's decision was appealed to the Planning Commission primarily on the basis of rear yard shadows created by the proposed addition. It was during the review of this appeal that staff identified the review of the second floor addition had not been conducted properly. This building permit exceeded the review of staff and should have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. The technical issues that were found in the design review approval were corrected in time for the May 1st Planning Commission meeting as part of the conditions of approval. At this meeting, the solar access study prepared by the applicant was evaluated and contested by the appellant's as not accurately depicting the shadows. It was also urged by the appellant's to shift the second floor to the west to reduce the impacts. The item was continued to June 5th so that the applicant could modify the design based on the suggestions by the appellant's and the Planning Commission. And it was at this June 5th meeting that the applicant added windows and removed the projection raised by staff, but chose not to shift the addition to the west. The Planning Commission considered the public testimony, upheld the staff-level design review, and as you can see on pages three through five, there are five primary concerns that the appellant's contend that have not been addressed appropriately by the applicant or the Planning Commission. Staff has provided responses following each of these concerns. Staff contends that the process of the second story should have been reviewed by the Planning Commission on the onset, but the appellant's issues regarding the shadows of privacy cannot be supported through either process, whether at staff level or Planning Commission level. Processing issues related to multiple building permits have been remedied by the adoption of the 2016 Building and Fire Code, as well as staff-level projects must be approved by the director. As for this particular case, staff would, would recommend option A, not option B, that is identified at the bottom of page one and five, and to include the modified special condition E, as stated. More details provided in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Schneider?
I'm confused. The staff memo in two different places says staff recommends option B, not option A.
That's correct. Did I misstate it? So we're, we're looking at option A, which is deny the appeal without prejudice by upholding the Planning Commission denial. Although three options are provided to you, the bottom of page one and page five identify that staff recommends that council select option B.
Okay, well, I'm not going to support that. Just so you know, I'm option B. That's how I read this. So my questions are, um, I've heard from a number of residents all over Millbrae for the last couple of years that their neighbor, a neighbor, will bring in one set of plans and then something else gets built. And I happen to be in the back of planning when this mission, the last time this came to Planning Commission, and I don't understand how, and I know the memo says we fixed it now, and yet these seem to be happening all over town. So what has staff done? What has the city done to make sure that a resident isn't shown one set of plans or a set of residents are shown one set of plans and then something else is built? What have we done to stop that from happening?
All due respect, can we just focus on this issue right now and focus on that issue?
Well, but to me, this is that issue.
That is an issue, but it's not what's on agenda.
I do think we should try to stick to resolving the issue before...
Then here's my second part. Fine. The second part is, you have a neighbor who's having a project built upslope from them that's going to take away some of the shade, or some of the sun in their yard. The memo goes on to talk about trees. Well, trees can be thinned, trees drop their leaves, et cetera, but a building doesn't do that. So once the building is built, it's there. And my understanding after reading through this long attachment is they had started building the framework before it was actually even approved. And yet now we're saying that's okay? And, okay, sorry, your, your yard's going to be shaded a little bit, but oh, well, it's not significant enough? I just don't understand how we can treat our own residents that way.
So I'm trying to follow the, the question at hand here regarding...
The question is how we allowed a process to start building before it had all the permits.
Okay, well, I...
Well, it's actually written in all the documentation that they had started framing it up before they had the fully approved second set of, of approvals.
So under the background on page two, there is a timeline that identifies the building permit process, and there is a plan check process prior to the issuance of a building permit. And in this case, building permits were issued to the applicant prior to the construction. It was during the course of this construction that both permits were acted upon at the same time that brought attention to this development in regards to the significance of, of the proposal to shade and to privacy. So that can be found on page two. But the permits were issued appropriately and...
And yet we stopped the project. Even though the permits were issued, we went ahead and said, "Oop, there was a problem. Stop the project."
So, so in regards to the staff report, I believe it's, it's, it's identified that the first permit was issued by Wright. That's the ground floor addition.
Under 500 square feet. Yes, I understand that.
No, that's, that's the second floor that you're referring to.
No, I, when you add the second floor, both projects become greater than the, the square footage that would have required a different process. So by going in, in two different pieces, they subverted one of the processes.
And then we corrected that.
And then corrected that process.
And then we, we corrected the process. So you're correct. A mistake initially was made. They bifurcated the, the permits. And then when that was caught...
And they're getting exactly what they wanted with the addition of windows looking down into the property next door. All I can see is that this, this, there was a mistake. I see we've cleared it up, but the resident next door has been injured.
Before we reach conclusions, let's go through the process. I, do you have, Mr. Mayor, some speaker slips from...
Yes.
Appellants and from appellees, I imagine?
I believe so.
So what we normally do before we reach conclusions is, is hear the full record. So I would ask if, I mean, at this point, if you have questions for our Planning Director...
Well, I'm trying to ask questions, but clearly I'm trying to understand how the city does things, but that wasn't considered part of the process.
No, no, I, I...
And because I haven't gone through one of these things before, I wanted to know how the city does things. But I'll sit and wait and listen to the process.
Yeah, good. And if you have questions, I mean, I, I think what we should be very clear in the record that there, there were some oversights at the staff level, and we're being very honest about that, that there was a bifurcation in permits and that wasn't caught. But when it was, we went through the process correctly. So there was some human error, and then there was human correction. And if you have other questions, I mean, I think the issue as to what we're doing in the future is, is something that should be addressed, but not necessarily relevant here.
I can understand that, but when? And how many more of these are going to happen before the when happens?
And so I would ask the mayor if, well, first of all, if there are any other of your colleagues on the council, Mr. Mayor, who have questions as to facts and what happened and what's been presented. And then I think we should listen to the appellant's and then let's listen to the appellees, and let's set time limits that might be appropriate when each get up. Usually like we give each side 10 minutes or whatever, because there may be lots of people.
Fair enough. Okay.
So reserve my comments, Suzanne, after the public comments.
I just have one clarification, because after reading this for the first time, the staff report said to recommend, that the staff recommends option B. And you, and that was a typo? Or that was a mistake? It's...
That was a typo. That's correct.
Okay.
Which one are you recommending?
It would be option A.
And the second floor addition is under 500 square feet?
Yes. That's the modification to the special condition E that would ensure that that would be the case.
Okay. Okay. Let's hear first from the appellant's. We have Areti Seymour and the attorney Elena Rifkin with us. And is 10 minutes a fair amount of time for, for each side?
I guess.
Okay. Let's, let's keep it to...
Speaker slips we have.
Oh, I have several others.
I mean, there might be some questions, but 10 minutes would probably be okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for hearing us this evening. As you know, typically, a Planning Commission decision will be resolved within one hearing, and unfortunately, we've had two Planning Commission hearings, and we're here today. And much of this stems from some issues with ordinance number 750, which was enacted by the Millbrae City Council in March 2015. That ordinance amends section 10.05.2500.0B of the Millbrae zoning code, which allows a desk-level review of additions which are 500 square feet or under, rather than having the staff-level review, which is how we've come to be here today. The applicants bypassed having a, a staff design review, so there were no public, public hearings before the project began. My, my clients, the neighbors most impacted by the second floor addition and the addition only discovered that there was any kind of remodeling or addition happening when there was demolition work happening on a Saturday and they happened to be home, and that's how they discovered it. There are multiple issues with it. There was some mention prior of two permits, but there's actually been four permits that were issued. So their first permit was issued for a first floor addition in April 2015. Second permit, August 2015, that was for the addition of the second floor unit. A third permit was issued August 24th, 2015, and that was for the first floor addition. And then finally, in May 2016, there was a permit, and this was the combined permit for both the first and the second floor additions. And this was after the stop work order had already been issued because of complaints regarding debris and garbage in the front of the property. And that was to be completed by Tyco Builders. Tyco Builders, if you look at the California State License Board, is no longer licensed, so the builder that they have on their plans has an expired licenses and is unable to complete the work at this time. And that's something that's current as of this evening. Revised plans were sent in in October 2016, but if you look through the timeline as to the proof of neighbor consultations, there is no clear understanding of what neighbors were actually shown. Neighbor consultations on file were done in November 2015, December 2015, and my clients only received theirs September 2016, which was well after work had begun, the permits had been issued, and after the stop work notice had already been issued. So part of the issue when we were in the Planning Commission hearings was this discussion, "Oh, what are we going to do now? There's already this framing up." But the framing was done without getting any kind of proper notification, and the applicants are no longer interested in trying to make modifications in order to meet the requests that the applicants, the appellant's have as to diminish the impact on their home. In fact, when the Planning Commission hearing was continued in order for them to make these considerations, the only changes that were made were the inclusion of additional windows, and these windows are now going to be facing directly across from the appellant's window. So it's even less privacy. So rather than trying to make accommodations, they just added additional windows, which would create even less privacy. There've been some issues with the shadow study. We dispute the shadow study. We've suggested that there have, that we have somebody come from the Planning Commission or the Building Department to take a look at it, since the framing is already up and you can see the actual impact of the shadows on the property itself and on the backyard. It's not something that's going to be theoretical with a shadow study, but it's something that you could actually go and see right now, and that's not, that, that hasn't taken place. And that's a very practical solution that would allow for a visual demonstration of the impact on my clients. Essentially, we ask that the applicants either move the second floor addition to be center in the property, which is more in line with the rest of the residences in the area. Nobody has theirs plumb against the, the side. Everybody has theirs centered. Or to disallow the building of the second floor. And I'll save some time so my client can speak as well.
Good evening. My name is Areti, and I'm the owner of 448 Lomita. I bought the house approximately about 12, 14 years ago, and the reason I bought the house because of the opening, the backyard, the skies, and the light that I had. You heard from our lawyer the facts, so I don't want to bring the facts. What I want to bring is, was me and my husband, that we came, to a big surprise after we came back from our vacation in the late summer of 2016, to find a two-story building. Being very busy, small business owners, we took two trips to the city planning, questioning what's going on, what's going on. Was dirt everywhere. Our house was covered in dust. And we were told, "Nothing is matter. What are you, what are you talking about? They're building less than 500 square feet." They're building less than 500 square feet. It did not have to go through planning. My husband comes home, he goes, "What are you going to say? They said it's less than 500." And I'm like, "This is not 500." My husband goes like, "Well, you know everything. Well, you go down to the city and see what's going on." So I did so. We came back together, and we met with the city planning, and we're told the same thing. And I said, "Okay, if they had built the first addition first, isn't there steps that the planning of the city should be taking? Somebody should be checking that, yes, indeed, the extension, the first-floor extension was done? Okay? Can you pull a Google map and see that there was not the first floor? Here we have 8 plus 100 square feet. I have this big wall of 20-plus feet high by 20 right front of my face. And how can it be 500 square feet?" So it was us that we had to question the city planning. And finally, the city listened the day they came and they stopped the project. And it was us. My husband and I spent a lot of money. We hired an architect. We were asked to provide revision plans, which is we did. We could not sign because they were not originally, apparently. It was us that we had to hire a lawyer so our voice can be heard through. I do believe we live in this country. There there are laws, there are guidelines, and everybody should follow those. And there it's another thing that we call it respect. And you must respect your family and your neighbors and your friends. And none of that took place. So here I am on my backyard, looking at a wall 20 by 20. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Move to the applicant. Okay. So we have with us ZA.
She said, "I'll back you."
I'm sorry?
We are in the presentative.
Okay. Sure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, representative of the board. My name is Ahmad from Banner Consulting. I'm a permit expediter in San Francisco. I'm a licensed contractor, BNC 36 licensed contractor. I happened to see Tina. She was used to work for a building depart- I mean, planning department in San Francisco. Wonderful lady that she knows her way around the city and planning issues, that the neighbors putting her down and this and that. They're trying to bring her down, but she's done wonderful city of San Francisco, and obviously, she moved to this location to provide the services for this neighborhood. Anyway, we heard all these comments from the lawyer and the tenant. First of all, there's no window on a property line. We made a correction on 2015 drawing that they removed the windows from the property line, so the second floor, so there would be no peeking, peeping through the property. The distance from the building to the property line is 12 feet, the second floor, plus five-foot property, five-foot setback from their building to the property line. Total of 17 foot away, the second-floor building, from the property line to their property line, over 17 feet long. We- they were talking about the shadow study. We have done shadow study by engineer over here. He's sitting over here. He can testify. He can show you. But they're all about the- they're talking about the shadow study, shadow study, shadow study. But they never have done any shadow study. They only provide the picture of the sun running from one way or another. That's one picture they have. And we provide the last hearing. We provide the services that shows how the shadow study shows there is practically not much shadow is on their property. They have a property line trees, which is more than 30 feet high, and over six or seven of them on a straight run, you can see there is- if the shadow study is going to happen, it shows that the trees provide more shadows on their property than a building being away 17 feet away from their building.
That's one of the pictures showing the-
I would like to present the picture to-
It's in their package.
This one?
Oh, it's in their package. Yeah, yeah, it's in their package.
Okay.
It's hard to tell what direction the pictures are coming from.
This is from their own property. That's what they're giving us, this-
This is from their own backyard.
We have a document to prove that we started the work after the permit issued. And we have all of these documents to prove it to you, that we have worked- we didn't work without the permit. This is not what we do, obviously, in San Francisco. We've done hundreds of projects in San Francisco, and this is the only one sort of here. And then they're mentioning about moving the building to the center of the- the center of the property. This frame has been built already with the permit. How can you remove, which means you have to demolish basically second floor and remove the whole entire building to middle of the building? How many foot? Five feet? Removing the building five feet, which means the whole structure of the building is going to change. And this is what they're showing us. I don't know whether you have this pic- I wish we had the-
That's the rendering from the front view of the- after we build the addition.
You have to go in the microphone.
Yeah. Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Well, this is a rendering we also provided to show-
Can you pass it? I don't think we ever saw the design.
From the front view, that it's not really a good idea that we centered the back addition. And this is done, framed up by permit, and they request this after the structure is built. And again, back in 2015, around December, I also have a package. It's handed to the council. It's showing evidence that we have met with the 408 neighbor to show them the true addition is coming up. So if you guys have a chance, or maybe that package is explain everything. And also have the email that I printed out. We've been communicating back in 2015, around November, December, which is that is not including in your package.
Besides all of these, the- we had the last meeting with the planning commission, and four to nothing, they approved the permit after almost two and a half hours of discussing back and forth, back and forth. They realized that everything went through the proper channel, the permit issued in the right way, the planning did wonderful job, and all blame it on the city plan. They blame the city planning they made a mistake. And it's impossible to go through getting the permit, which a planning department will make a mistake. It's impossible. I don't think we have anything else to say if you have any question. Oh, by the way, we have a engineer over here. He's done a shadow study. We produced it last time. He's ready to have any question you guys have, and he can provide you with that information.
Also, the public speaker.
And we have a lot of public speaker too, to support our project.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for those comments. And we do have several speaker slips on the item. It just occurred to me, do we need to open the public hearing before the public can speak? Or is it already open?
Yeah, we should have- that's something we should have opened at the outset.
It has already been opened by virtue of the speakers speaking. Okay. So we have several speaker slips, and since there are many speakers, please try to keep your comments brief if possible. The first speaker is Wenning Man.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Wenning Man. I'm a physics professor at San Francisco State University. I'm here representing the current neighbor for this young couple who is trying to remodel their house at Millbury. I'm so surprised to hear that some comments saying that their new neighbors are going to be injured by them, or there's worth no respect, because to my experience, they were the best neighbor that I could ever have. We trust them so much since we moved to San Bruno in 2009. They have been taking care of our house when we were in vacation. We gave them our keys. They take care of our garage, yard, and electricity pipeline trees. And for a couple of months when we were not here, they have been very considerate, very responsible, and very kind. So I- to my- in my opinion, that they were the best neighbor that I could ever imagine. And also, I have heard that they bought this house at Millbury, and I was wondering when they are going to move for such a long time, thinking that the remodeling and everything has been delayed. And you could imagine that in the last few months, during the very, very heavy rain season, when they'll stop the project, caused such a huge problem when the roof has been taken away and the flooding and everything soaked the entire new house for so many months in the past spring. We were so sorry for them. And also considering there are two school-age children who are supposed to be living in this good- wonderful school district. Millbury has this school district with much better reputation than South Cities and Bruno and everything. There are two school-year children are waiting to stay, like, live in this new house and be close to the school and everything and everything. So I heard that Millbury is such a terrific community, which provide the best everything, including education to their residents. I believe that Millbury does not only for their old residents, but also for their new residents, like this young couple. And also, considering, another thing that I would want to bring into consideration, is thinking about the current rent of such a property every month. At what, $2,000, $3,000 per month? Thinking about all the delay, more than one year, stuff like those, how much money it has cost this new couple, this young family, in terms of losing that money, was not able to finish their remodeling and moving. That's- and so, and also, I understand that there were some miscommunications, some mistakes. But I, as a physics professor, I believe in science and the data, instead of people's feeling, oh, I feel like there's a giant wall, or I feel like my shed, my sunlight has been blocked. I believe in those hard work that those engineers and architectures have done to show what has been studied with data.
Is your address?
Yes. So thank you very much for your attention.
What is your address?
My address, 781 Acacia Avenue. I live one block away from Miss Chen's family.
San Bruno.
San Bruno, yeah.
The next speaker is Deng Lu, or Deng Lin. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deng. I live in Millbury at 400 Palm Avenue. So my family knows Zheng and Xia, Justin's family, for three years. Our kids go to the same dancing school, the same swimming class in this neighborhood. Millbury is a great community, and we believe it's a great place to raise family. However, it's so sad to see that they are blocked by running so many troubles in extending their home at Millbury. As I remember that, they bought their home around January 2015, and they started the process to extend and remodel their house. It has been already two and a half year that it's still hopeless for them to know when they can continue their project and when they can complete their project. When they first purchased this home, they had a high hopes for the community, for the city, for the neighborhood, compared with purchasing bigger and newer home somewhere else. It is much more affordable for them to extend and remodel their existing home. Plus, their kids are already attached to Millbury neighborhood. It would be so heartbreaking for them to move somewhere else. Moreover, lots of houses in Millbury are more than 50 years old, and they are in a great need of remodel and maintenance. People should be encouraged to make the city looks better, more beautiful, with the support from both the government and the neighbors. Remodeling and extending current house at Millbury not only benefit people who are living in there, but also benefit the community as a whole. Who wants to live in a community where houses are very old and dilapidated? Nobody. Even I am thinking of remodeling and extending my home. But Zheng and Justin's case, just their painful experience, just makes me hesitate to invest time and money on it. As I know, they already gone through all the legal processes, and I do hope they can support- I hope the city can support them as much as possible. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Evan Skakos.
My name is Evan Skakos, and I'm the daughter of Arete and Glenn Seymour. And I just wanted to take a few minutes here and just share a bit of my perspective as well. I'm- first, I just want to share with everyone that my parents are very fair people, and they're very understanding. And just on a kind of neighbor level, they have many friends in the neighborhood. And I think from a personality perspective, you would find them very easy to get along with. This issue goes much deeper than that. And as far as everyone wanting to live in a home that they feel good about, in a community that they enjoy, those are dreams that we've all had, including my mother, who is an immigrant and came to this country and built a life for herself. As far as spending money, the neighbors in question aren't the only ones that have incurred cost as a result of this botched application and botched extension. My parents have spent thousands of dollars, probably more than $10,000. I didn't really ask, but just defending themselves and defending their ability and their right to live in a home that feels comfortable as well. And I just see this as an issue of, you know, was the extension carried out legally? And was it put through the correct channels? And were the people who were supposed to authorize the permits involved in kind of a legit way? So I think those are the questions that should be answered and should be looked at, not, you know, are my kids attached to the neighborhood? Or am I losing light? You know, should this extension have gone up in the first place? Was it legal? And should it be allowed to continue being built? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is George Lynch.
Good evening. My name's George Lynch. I live at 408 Santa Florita in Millbury. I've been a resident in Millbury for 40 years. I know Millbury has lots of rules. They have lots of laws. And I personally believe that I followed every one of them my entire life while I've been here. I feel that you have rules in place for a reason, to make it a better place. Millbury was a great place. Millbury, to me, is not the great place. I moved into 40 years ago, but things have changed, and I see that. But I think that we're allowing this addition, if- I don't care if it goes up or it doesn't. The process is what gets me. From what I understand, being through a couple of hearings, that the first couple of- the 200 feet, we'll say, at the bottom, didn't have to go through the design review. The top 400 feet didn't have to go because it didn't hit a certain number. If it would have both been together, it would have had to go through a design review, which meant, being a neighbor four doors away, I would have been notified that there was going to be a hearing. I was never notified of a hearing for this- for tonight's hearing, I was notified because I called City Hall and requested it. It's the only reason I heard about this tonight. We've never been any part of this, like I said, four doors away. And they've mentioned a couple of things that were big sticklers to me the last- And they've mentioned a couple of things that were big sticklers to me the last time. When they talked to the owners of the house, the first time during the first planning commission meeting, the question was asked, "Has the rain ruined this house at all?" And they said, "Absolutely not," because they wanted to keep the design like it was. Well, now tonight we hear that it has been ruined, the inside of the house, from the rains from last year. It's just, if you, I personally just don't think it's, the way it was, we were deceived, the people of Millbury were deceived by the way this went about, and I don't think you should be rewarded for doing that. I don't think deceit should be rewarded on anything. That's how I run my life, that's how I run my business, that's how our family works, and that's how the city of Millbury used to work. Whether it does or not still is up to you guys, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Ingrid Richard.
Yes, good evening. I reside behind their property and I was, I'm not aware, I mean, I initially received the plans and everything before the construction had started by the architect and they had shown the design and so on. Obviously, you know, you're never in favor to have all of a sudden a building in front of you, however, that's progress. And from the, from the architectural rendering that I had seen, I was, my only, my one concern I had at that point was where the window was going to be facing, which was going to be on the north side, which would be directly in front of me. And so, on the original plans, I had requested that if possible, I would rather have the window further west so that I would not be looking straight down into the window and also for them for, in respect to privacy on both levels. And then afterwards, when I was shown the newest, latest plans, I was informed that there were not going to be any windows whatsoever on the north side. And I personally have absolutely no objection and I'm looking right down at the property. I'm, you know, there's, I mean, it's my house and their house. And I'm very anxious, actually, that we can move forward because I've been looking at scaffolding and framing for over a year and through, it's true though, and, you know, I'm kind of tired of looking at that, so we need to move on and let whatever has to happen and is, you know, and again, it's not my business, but as far as a request to move the construction over, further to the west, then, then you could have that neighbor start to complain that now it's closer to that residence, so, and that's just an impossible task, to dismantle all the construction that's presently existing, then you have just an empty shell of a house anyhow. Again, I'm here, I have no objections to the continuation and the completion of the property and anxious for it to all be taking place. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Ming Yu Feng.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ming Yu Feng, I live on 600 Rock of Santa Barbara. So we all love the, I mean, we all agree that we all love the city of Millbury because all our school district and everything. And I do have two children in three different schools, three different schools, elementary, middle school, and high school, so we're very fortunate to be in this community. And I just happen to know the couple's young children also going to the Taekwondo School that right across from Seifeng, it's been around for over 30 years, so they incur a lot of discipline for kids and the working of everybody as well. So we all share a common interest. And every time when we pass by, which is literally half a block from my house, the project, I'm like, "What happened?" You know, this has been going on forever. It feel like, you know, and then when I, when I just look on the paperwork, it's like 2015. I mean, I just can imagine the financial burden that they are going through as a family, as a young couple with children, they're trying to enjoy in a community. And I don't know why we cannot, I mean, I understand the shadow and everything, like last time I said, we have a lot of tree in our backyard. And that create beautiful shadow and fresh air for our house, if we kind of enjoy Millbury as well, right? And we kind of cut down one of this tree last summer because in concern that with the high wind and potential earthquake, we've been advised to cut down one of the tree. And we kind of like, oh my God, we wish we had that tree still in here because the shadow, the tree that kind of covering the shadow in our, covering the sun toward, directly toward where it's sliding door in the backyard, really is hurting us without it. So, I mean, it's just the tree and everything and the environment itself, Millbury is amazing. And I think it just been, we just need to embrace each other and work as a community and I think we have a great place to live for everybody in here. I just really want the family to have the project move forward and be able to enjoy the hard work, the trying to incorporate the children's life into these communities as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Deborah Ann Warra.
Good afternoon, as you know, I was here in, I believe it was in May, and I spoke in regards to the background history on the Chen family, oh my God, I'm sorry, my mind is going to... With my friends here who I work with, Justin, who is accountant where I work at the Adult Day Health Center, and his wife, Zi, who we have been friends for over 12 years, and they are very law-abiding citizen. I don't think, I heard earlier about what they said, they had started the home before ever getting the right adjustments or the right paperwork done on the home before they started. I don't believe that's Justin because he's an accountant. People go to him to ask for certain things, he won't do anything without the knowledge of the department head before giving anything. He's law-abiding, he does everything by the books, he doesn't change, his character is good, I can put my life on it that he won't do anything that is wrong in doing so, and likewise for his wife. He's very pleasant, he's a friend to everybody, he'll help you out if you're there in need of, and he is somebody you can depend on. And for us to do something without being, doing it legally, that's nothing like Justin or his family. So I am sorry this is happening to them too because they are very good people, they live their life, they have children who they really, really love and who they, the kids are in all types of activities and they're just as pleasant as can be. So I too wish and hope that Justin can get his house done and complete so he can give what's needed for his children, which is more room, because that's what he was building it for. And he was so happy when he started this, this project out and he told everybody at the job what was happening and he was good in what they were building. And like it was being said, it's been since almost two years and he still don't have what he was wishing for. And I wish for him to have what it is that he deserves, and that is a home for him and his family to live in, to be safe, and to have a good life. I thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Jenny Zhang.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny and I'm here to share my opinion and perspective on this case. First of all, I just want to say I do support 452 Lomita Avenue for adding a second floor to the remodeling plan. I think that the children of the family, which is one brother and one sister, will eventually need their room, their own room to the needing privacy of the opposite gender. When I first, when I talked to the kids, Eric and Kaylee, they told me, they first told me that they were going to move to Millbury and they were going to have their own rooms. They were really excited and I was also really excited for them. However, I feel like this opportunity is taken away from them now because of this case. I just want to say, share my personal experience that growing up, I've always shared a room with my siblings and I've also, I know how it feels like to share a space with people. Even though like, sharing a room with siblings are good bonding times, but there's also many times where I wanted my own room. For example, when I tried to do homework or something personal, my sisters might be playing music or like they might be doing something important themselves, I feel like this really affects my productivity and my overall academic performance. I find it really important to allow children to have their own personal space, especially when it comes to siblings who have, are the opposite gender. By having this personal space, not only does it provide them privacy but also teaches them responsibility and independence. As a person who's attending school myself, I feel that it's really necessary to provide a children with a good learning environment. And I feel like by letting the kids, Eric and Kaylee, having their own rooms, it would be really helpful for this process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Chung Po Feng.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chung Po, I'm a resident of Millbury and I live in the 1320 Terrace Drive, so actually not, nowhere close to them. And my kids and their kids went to a soccer, soccer class, that's how we know each other. Just want to share a couple of my thoughts, I'm a licensed landscape architect, so I've been practiced over 10 years. So the first thing is, I, it's the first, first time in this kind of event, so I have zero experience, but my house right now, it's, it's in the process of addition application. And I have wonderful experience with the planning. They help, they helped, really helped us a lot because it's our first time to do this kind of things. We have addition over 500 square foot, but during the process, it did cost a lot of concerns for the neighbors. So the first thing is, the city sent out the mails to the neighbors and we talked to the neighbors and then, you know, it's a long process, took us like a year and a half, even this point, we just submit the building application like a month ago, we're getting close to get it, I think. To me, I don't know, I kind of, I think the process, the main issue is, we also bring this issue to cast the shadow to my neighbors. But I look at this, I look at these issues from, from this point of view is that it's very similar to this case because my neighbor also, on their side, they have a tree and from our side, we have the addition. So my neighbor has the concern about the privacy and then the shadow, so I put this stick on my, I don't even have a friend, but I put a stick at the corner at the same height for the addition, so he can verify how much shadow is going to cast to their backyard. But I think in reality, we both know the major shadows cast by his tree. And to me, the logic is, if my addition cast shadow to their backyard during the year, I don't know, to me, I can argue their tree cast shadow to my backyard. But there's no reason I request the city, hey, they cast the shadow to our backyard, I want that tree to be removed, that just sounds ridiculous. So at the end, they, they have agreed with the addition. But there is another major issue is, my house is sort of pretty new to apply this ADU accessory dwelling unit from the state code, which one residential units can have two kitchens. And all my neighbors are against that idea. So they have, no, they make appointment...
Thank you. Sorry, your time has expired, but thank you for your comments. Okay, the next speaker is Dennis Acosta.
Good evening, council. My name is Dennis Acosta, I live at 444 Lomita, it's two houses to the east of the house in question. Been to all these meetings, been a part of this whole process from the beginning. I was actually the neighbor who was home when the second story went up and I noticed that it was going up and I had no idea and I called my neighbors up and they had no idea and sent them here to the staff desk to ask what was going on. They came back, like Aretti said, twice and was told the same story, that basically this was all legal and that this was already approved and the addition was under 500 square feet. And I kept telling them, again, we're talking about experts, I've also been in construction for over 20 years myself, and I said, "I know you can't build a two-story addition without some sort of notice and consent of the adjacent neighbor, especially that one who is most affected by the addition." Anyway, this whole process kind of went on. I've been reading a lot of the supposed facts issued by staff, which is really quite disconcerting and somewhat contrary as you go through the 50 some odd pages, some of the statements, the timelines, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, my point is, has to do with due process, right? This whole thing is about due process. Everybody's supposed to have a right to comment on things that are going to affect their livelihood and their home and their families and just the way we live. Unfortunately, the neighbors were not given that opportunity. They were told by city staff that their basically voice and their concerns were not legitimate because this whole thing was supposedly done by the books. And obviously, I think if you look into the details a little bit further, you'll find out that city staff is quite, was irresponsible in the entire project, obviously issuing a second permit without ever looking at the first permit, never having one signature, one check off, one initial or anything checked at that point. So my issue, again, has nothing to do with the owners. Obviously, we've heard some very emotional and serious concerns by both parties and it has to do with the families that are affected. Unfortunately, you do have two families that are affected and you have people who aren't necessarily directly affected who seem to be causing most of the issues. One being the architect and builder who obviously tried to circumvent a process that was there for a reason. And I think if you do a little bit of homework, you will find that that process was purposely circumvented. Also, staff's responsibility in not catching these attempts at circumventing the process and allowing the second permit to be issued without noticing that the first one was never done. So please check the facts and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, those are all the speaker slips that I see. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We already gave 10 minutes for the applicants to speak and it was assumed that the owner would speak during that time.
But they didn't use up their whole 10 minutes, I would think, if the...
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor, I think you...
Yeah, I was going to say, why don't we keep the hearing open anyway during discussion?
Okay.
Okay, I read all my motions.
Okay, can you give a brief statement?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for spending your valuable time here with me. As you might know, the case is very straightforward and the final permit we submit as a whole project has approved by the planning department. And the planning commission approved my project. It is because it's showing that the shadow impact neighbor 44A Lomita is mainly coming from the tree at the border. Furthermore, by building the second structure to the center, we create no difference to shed, to the shadow study, to the shadow condition. So in addition, there is also a few things I would like to clarify. Due to the time limit, I only pick a few. So 44A Lomita states that they did not receive the neighbor consultation form until one year after the other neighbors. That is not the case. All the forms were sent out around the same time, late 2015. My architect had met with every adjacent neighbor back in late 2015, including 44A Lomita. I have the email to prove that their meeting was on December 10th, 2015, at 2:00 p.m. Without hearing anything back from the neighbor, my architect Angelina contacted them once again on December 27, 2015. And luckily, I'm thankful that the other adjacent neighbor, they're supporting me. Ms. Ingrid, earlier, she come here... Ms. Ingraham, earlier, she come here to supporting me. And also, Michael and Jennifer, they're from 444 Lomita Avenue. They invite my family to their baby shower party a few weeks ago. And it was a great party, and my family and the other neighbors, we spent great time in their house. And we're so excited to welcome the new members to join the neighborhood. Mohammed, 451 Lomita Avenue, also another adjacent neighbor, is very welcome and friendly. And our kids go to the same school and they play together, so we talk a lot. It is a great neighborhood, like Michael always remind me. And I'm looking forward be able to move in soon. It has been more than a year since my construction cut off, and it's almost mid-October, and the rainy season is right around the corner. It worries me a lot. Last year, due to the unpredictable weather condition, in order to get least damage of the open structure, we not only just covered the roof, but we also used plastic sheets to cover the floor and sides as well. I checked weather report every hour during the day. We've covered the house before the rain and take off the plastic to make it dry faster to eliminate the damage. My mother-in-law, who is 70-years-old lady, take care of the house with me every time. And it just heartbreaking to see her work with me every time. But during the, but this is what happened every time one it rains. So during the January to April this year, more than 100 days. The planning commission hearing cannot be scheduled due to pending the supporting document from 44A Lomita. We were waiting for their shadowing report because they did not agree with what we have. And then it turns out the shadow report they have is just the seven pictures on the cellphone. One of the picture, you already have it. So which I believe those seven picture can be done in a week instead of like more than 100 day from January to April during the rainy season. At last, I would like to thank you all my other adjacent neighbors. I do not have the tall tree at the border with all the other three adjacent neighbors like the one we, we have that can blocking this messy structure from them. But I really appreciate how understanding they are to my situation while also give me good luck and warm wishes during this two years. That is all I want to say today, and I would like to use the same ending I used last time. I love Millbury. My whole family love Millbury. Please help me move in. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, should we go back to the council then and ask questions or comments on?
Can we have staff reply to some of those comments?
Yeah, Ms. Ward, can you give any response to some of the comments raised?
I think I'd like to start off by saying and pointing out the minutes of both of these meetings, May 1st and June 5th, where the planning commission took public testimony, reviewed the data that was submitted, both the applicant and the appellant's. I think we've heard tonight that the applicant did submit a shadow study, it was evaluated, and in return, the appellant showed photographs, and it was not comparable to the shadow study. And through the, through the minutes, if we turn to those comments, we hear the commission's comments that they suggested a shadow study and, let me see, let me get right to the point here, on the May 1st comments. Applicants submitted two permits. They went over a series of issues regarding the timeline of the, when the permits were issued. They, they inquired about the application process. They went over the, the suggestion of, of shifting the project over on the second floor. It was, it was suggested to the appellant to, to prepare an independent shadow study to be completed so that it can be evaluated. That was not selected. We then continued to the June 5th meeting, then took public testimony, went over the same facts. I think there was testimony tonight that that meeting was over two hours in length, where again, the commission evaluated any, the proposed changes to the project. It included the removal of a projection in the upper floor, as well as removal of stairs and relocation. It was suggested in that previous meeting that windows should be added to provide some interest in light. And the applicant did provide those changes. It was inquired if the appellants were in agreement with the applicant's shadow study, and again, if the independent shadow study was completed. The photographs were, were entered into discussion, but no additional information or data was provided. It was commented that the planning commission sympathized with the neighbors, however, quote, "The impact of the shadow is minimal, and the appellants also have a tree that impacts the shadows." It was reported the project complies with code and the building standards. It was also noted that the shadow impact is less than significant according to the shadow study. The shadow study covers a one-year period, morning and an evening, so it's not just one moment or, in, in, in time. It's a, it's a period of months in different times of day. There was a request of clarification of the neighborhood consultation forms. I think that was covered tonight. It was, it was provided to the satisfaction of the planning commission. They, they took a look at the process and agreed that things could have been handled a little bit better, could have been a little more efficient, but the due process was put in place after it was identified that an error had been made. Planning commission recommended approval based on those conditions and the findings that were provided that night. And, and that kind of summarizes, I think, what I've heard tonight to this point about what was discussed at those meetings and, and how due process was taken into effect.
Can, can you address the notification, please?
So the notification, generally speaking, when there's a, a building permit, it, it doesn't, it doesn't rise to a level of a neighborhood consultation form. When there is a second story that meets the ordinance 750, where it's over 500 square feet, or in the event that two permits together constitute a significant architectural change or change to the, the property, we will provide a consultation form. The consultation forms are provided by the applicant to the adjacent neighbors. These are the budding parcels. And in this case, those were provided, but they weren't returned in the same amount of time. I think the, the timeline shows that almost all of them were returned within a fairly reasonable amount of time, with the exception of the appellant's submitted forms, which is almost a year after it shows receipt of being given. There was, in addition to that, the, the notification for the May 1st and the June 5th planning commission meeting was filed in accordance to the Millbury Municipal Code. So that included the neighborhood noticing, the placard on site, the general circulation of the newspaper, and, and I think, in fact, I recognize most of the speakers tonight because they were both all at the May 1st and the June 5th meeting. So those names are represented as well as in the minutes. So to reiterate, the notification process for the consultation forms was followed. I think the timeline or the return of those receipts, you know, I think there was a lot of effort being made on both parts. I just think that there was an impasse. There wasn't an agreement regarding those shadows, and that caused a delay in the processing and bringing these items before the planning commission. Thank you.
All right, let's, let's go down the line here. Councilman Schneider, if you have any questions or comments.
For the, let me make sure I'll use the right terms. For the appellant, the house that isn't being, isn't having the remodeling, were, they did have a list of things that they wanted to see. Did they get any of those? Were any of those recommendations taken into account and plans changed?
According to the minutes, the items in, from, from my participation, the items were, or the issues raised was to shift the entire second story to the middle of the property. And, and there was a validation made of the shadow study. There was a request or, or argument that the shadow study did not, did not include one particular month or morning. I believe it's December in the morning hours, there's a potential impact, and there was a disagreement with that. But there was no data to support to the contrary.
And then, did they talk about, so planning commissioners were the ones in June that said add windows? And I'm a little confused because I heard there were no windows and there were windows, and then I thought the gentleman over here said, no, there are no windows. So where are the windows? And it would be really nice to have a plan. I know when the planning commissioner have it, they've got the plans and you can see things a little bit easier. For the audience, I have pulled up as much as I can on Google Maps to get a better idea of what's going on here. And to me, looking at the front of 452 Lomita, it does look like the addition isn't right on the property line. So is that the case? It looks like it's setback. I can't, is that the five feet plus the five, plus the other five feet that ends up 17 feet?
That's correct. So there's a five-foot ground floor and there's a 12-foot upper floor setback.
And that'll just be a roof there? That won't be a deck or anything?
Originally, it had been an attic. It had been a projection, so that has been removed from the plan set that was provided on the June 5th. As in regards to the, the windows, initially, there were no second-story windows. But the planning commission thought that it looked a little odd because the ground floor does have windows. The upper floor that was presented on May 1st did not. As a condition of approval, planning commission required that the applicant take into effect, into account, the suggestion to relocate the upper floor to the middle of the property and then to also add the windows.
And by, so, but the windows are where? They're in the back of the house, on the side of the house?
They're on the rear, if I remember, on my, on my, my memory here. So it, it would affect the neighbor that spoke.
Are we just talking about these two windows on this picture here, which has them in the front of the house? So there's no windows in the back?
No windows, because I agree to. So we moved at the beginning when I met with 44A.
You need to come up to the mic.
Yeah, you have to come up to the microphone.
So the people at home can hear what you're saying.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to find out if the neighbor next door was listened to and some changes were made that could keep them happy too. Because frankly, from my perspective, is the city did wrong. The city did wrong and created this situation, and I'm sorry that the applicants are caught in this. But there's still somebody who's lived there and has to deal with this too.
Oh, sorry.
So the, the windows. I see the, I see where the roof is, and I see where the addition is, and I see the picture.
No, there's no window at the side facing to 448.
There are no windows facing the neighbor's property?
At the second level.
On the second?
Existing at the ground level.
There are no second-story windows?
No, no window facing 448.
Okay.
I think the confusing, it's back at May hearing, the planning commissioner hearing, they advised that if we want, we can put a window back there to bring the light and, and ventilation. But I explained to them, we, we have the other side to comply with the building call. So we are okay with not having a window on the 448 side.
Okay, and so the window then that the app, the appellant mentioned?
The whole package.
Is that a first-floor window that has a fence then between that window and the house next door?
Yes, six-foot, six-foot fence.
Yes.
Well, I just spent $70,000.
Well, they also talking about second floor, but.
Changing windows so that another house's kitchen doesn't look into a bedroom. So I, I understand the concern of having windows looking directly into a place where you might be changing. And I'm just trying to figure out, are the windows on the first floor gonna be looking into the house next door?
No.
Because there's a drop in elevation here too, isn't there?
I, I'm sorry, is this an existing window or not?
That's existing window on the first floor.
It's an existing window. We cannot, you know, get into.
So there's no changes?
There's no window at second floor. How about this? Yeah, that's it.
And then my last question is, when the neighborhood was notified, and because of the difference in the square footage not triggering it, were they notified of the first idea, the first project or the second project?
The second project.
So the second story?
Yes.
But was that before or after the framing started?
No, no, no. That was back at 2015. On the package I turned in today, that has the email printout that shows the evidence, the day, the meeting, I mean, the day and the email that I contacted them. So that was way before our permit get approved.
Okay, I, I mean, I read this and I read the timelines, but there were also some discrepancies in the timeline in the staff report. So I'm just trying to figure out what was what.
I, I think that's very confusing at all the timeline and schedule, but I want to clear that we have evidence showing that we meet with the 448 property owner at their business office at 2:00 a.m., I mean, 2:00 p.m., that I explained to them, the second story going to build, and I showed them the drawing, I showed them everything. I even offered them, I can show up at the job site to put a poll there. And she say, don't need to. Her husband can explain, which is Glenn. I think he's not here today. So after that, we never get back, they never get back to us. So we've been wait for two, three month, and the planning planner advised, I just submit whatever I have. So two month later, we got approved.
So had they turned their paperwork in saying, no, they don't like this, what would have happened? Or is that irrelevant at this point? And you can tell me it's irrelevant.
Not at that time, they said. I think, I think I can sum this thing, this, they all blaming on the planning department. She has done wonderful job. She's coming from very reputable San Francisco planning department. She follow up, as soon as she found the mistake, she stopped the project, and she went through the notification and everything. So all the blame is shifted to the planning department, which is completely wrong, when we recommend, as she said, for feedback, it took 180 days to show the shadow study. And at the end of the day, took three or seven picture of the sun going up and down. How can you blame a city planning, what we produce with the shadow study, where engineer, engineer is over here to testify, that they spent time and effort to show shadow study during the year? And these people, they show the picture after 180 days, and they come, they have dared to come and complain to the planning department making a mistake, and all the blame shifting to the planning, which, what they were the problem. They were not complying with the code, they were not answering the, they're going for vacation and stuff like that. And everything I can hear through this conversation, planning, 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 planning. And seriously, it's.
Last question, because I don't have the plans in front of me. The second floor, is it built on top of an existing first floor? So there's no new framing back there, it's just built on top?
Well, if you could see, I'm a mechanic, I'm, I'm engineer also, I'm a contractor. The way it's built, you can see, is, is built in a, in a, ceiling, average ceiling is eight-foot ceiling height. It's built after that eight-foot ceiling. The, the ceiling height of the whole entire building is probably 16 feet high. That's what you can see, only maybe, maybe about two feet over the, over the ridge of the building.
The point I'm trying to get to, and this will be my last question, is if you're building the second floor on an existing footprint of the first floor, and I understand that the framing is already up, so time and money has been spent on the framing, but if the issue is pushing it back a little bit, is that that big of a deal if it's on an existing first floor, first floor footprint? If you already built an, an additional first floor out, I can see that that's more problematic.
It is impossible, you have to demolish the whole building.
Excuse me, I work in the demolition field, you do not have to demolish the whole building, so please.
No, demolish the extension.
Please, no. You do not have to do that. I just want a yes or no. Is it on the existing footprint?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
You can't, you can't say it is existing footprint. Obviously, it's existing footprint, but is the foundation, is, it makes a difference. I work with a lot of engineer, we do the soft story in San Francisco, we do hundreds of them. And you cannot move the entire second floor from one side to another, which means you have to demolish every footing, every foundation to move it around.
In other words, you need, you need support, you need support for the second floor. If you move this second floor, you have to rebuild all of the support for it.
Exactly. Thank you.
But you built some support before you built the second floor?
Obviously. Obviously, you have to build it.
How about, we, we put the phase one and phase two, we start the construction at the same time. So when we have the phase one permit, one story back addition, we didn't start the construction yet. We wait until the phase two get approved. So it's go up at the same time with two permit.
Okay, Vice Mayor Papin, any questions?
I'd like to hear from staff again, please. I'm confused about legal counsel's comment where there are four permits issued. What happened, where, where was the staff issue exactly?
So I believe.
The problem with staff on this?
The, the issue that, that I see is that when the second building permit was issued and we received notification from the neighbor that both of the permits were being practiced or, or constructed at the same time, we stopped. or, or constructed at the same time, we stopped the work because both, those were considered significant. If it was just the ground floor addition, it would have gone through. The second permit, the building permit, wasn't, wasn't caught as, as a, an aggregate, incumulative to the first permit. Both of those together are significant. If, if the second permit was to be less than 500 square feet, we would have gone through the process. And I believe Councilmember Schneider brought the, the, the issue up, is what happens if we would have received the, the, the appellant or the neighbor's concern? Then staff would have been able to work with them to try to figure out how to come to an issue. That's, under ordinance 750, we're supposed to try to resolve neighbor complaints as the best that we can. If we can't, ordinance 750 says we bring it forward to the planning commission. What was missed here, and I think staff is, is, is trying to acknowledge the fact that the process on bringing those two together didn't happen the way they should have. They were issued separately. Once it was identified that they were issued separately and it was significant by the neighbors, and I appreciate the neighbors coming forward and bringing it up, because I think it is human error, but I think it's also-
Well, I, I find a problem with the fact that the neighbors came down here and were given inaccurate information. That's very disturbing.
That is disturbing. And, and, and that, that is something that will need to be addressed. But I think that, based on my conversation with the speaker, when he brought that to our attention, we were able to stop, evaluate where the error was, and to move forward, and to take that process that was essentially required under ordinance 750, which is bring it forward to the planning commission. I, I don't say that this was, this was handled in the best way, but I think we've got measures in place after, like I said, in 2016. Now we have a building code and fire code that catches these types of incremental building permits so that this, you know, fingers crossed, won't happen again. And that is because over a two-year period, based on council adoption with our building and fire code of November of 2016, building permits that are submitted over a two-year period are collected as a collective and could constitute as a significant project and could go to planning commission. So we're not going to see these types of issues happen in the future.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Do we have some type of a tracking system in place that is an improvement over what had been done in the past to make sure that these are caught right away?
Thank you for bringing that forward. Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. Now with the implementation of our new software, we're able to track these incremental building permits. So for example, maybe replacement of windows during the summer months and then maybe-
Which requires a permit in case anybody's watching.
Which requires, which requires a building permit. But then a couple of months later, maybe there's some dry rot or there's an addition, or a kitchen and bathroom remodel. Now with our tracking software and the fact that we have a building code and fire code that talks about a substantial improvement, anything over 50%, it automatically ties into planning. So those are tools that we're able to use, but those came after this permit.
So that would flag right away and, and come, go to planning before any work can be done on-
It would alert staff that there are multiple permits already in queue. So when you have multiple staff working on multiple permits, there is not that, there's, there's a, there's a, it's feasible that something could be missed from one plan checker to another. Now with the system that coordinates with everybody, it's going to flag every plan checker who's reviewing a permit, whether they reviewed the first permit application or not. So unfortunately, this project occurred before those systems were in place.
There was mentioned onsite notice. What sort of onsite notification is given?
So the council and public may have noticed that there's these, these large placards that are put on stakes, and we put those in the front of properties. We, we like to, to put those there because we like for passer-bys to see them as well as, maybe people don't want to catch the newspaper, or maybe they don't catch the website. But they walk the neighborhoods and they can see the placards on the property. We also make sure the applicant ensures that they're installed through the process, just like the story polls would be.
How long before the approval is given, do those placards go up?
Those are required by, by municipal code. That, that's actually in addition to our requirements. I think if we, if we focus on what's required legally by our municipal code, we do the, the 300-foot mailing notice. We also do the, the circulation and a general, in the, in the general circulation of a newspaper. And, and then we have our public notice requirement. In addition to that, as a courtesy, we do the, the placard onsite.
Okay, just a couple more quickies here. I am concerned that there was an allegation made that there is a builder building without a license.
I was aware that that was, that was current as of tonight. So I will, I will-
All right, that's-
Sir, can the applicant comment on that?
I think it's a yes or no.
They just renewing their license. It's going to be expire, supposed to expire September 30. So they just send the check in last week. It was catched by the time.
Look, there'd be no building going on without a license. So we, staff needs to-
At the time, they are licensed it. But right now-
If it's expired, then, you know, just-
Staff would need to confirm that they are a licensed builder if any permits are approved.
That is correct. Staff will confirm, as well as that since some time has passed, since there's been any progress inspections, we're going to need to verify that the building permits that have been issued are still in effect.
Okay. And so the question of four permits, were there four permits issued in this case or not?
I think the permits are referencing plan check numbers. They also issue a permit number. So when a plan is submitted, it gets a plan check permit number. Then when it's submitted for a building permit, the building permit then issues another number. So that's why you see some duplication in the, in the job description, I think, in the, in the timeline.
Okay. Can, while you're looking there, can we sum things up here? Did the planning, if this notification and the error did not occur, would this type of an addition have been approved by the planning commission, or did the planning commission do so?
Yes.
They have.
Yes.
301.
And they denied the appeal that you're hearing.
Okay. So they denied it coming to us, but they approved this. And the staff recommendation is, can you clarify right now what that is?
That's option A, deny the appeal that's before you and uphold the planning commission's decision.
I see. Okay. It's kind of a double negative here.
It's a double negative.
Well, it's, yeah.
Which makes it a positive.
Yeah. Okay. You know, this, it's, it's always tragic when these things happen and you've got neighbors against neighbors here. And trust me, the city of Millbrae has a horrific, not any staff presently, but, but, you know, when my family home was built, all of them were defective because somebody paid off an inspector. That aside, those lawsuits have happened, come and gone. I am hopeful that we can go forward here. And sadly, I, I'm always troubled by hearing these things. So thank you very much for the information.
Councilman Lee, comments?
Okay. First of all, I just, I apologize to the people who didn't feel they got properly noticed. Obviously, maybe we should look into that, about maybe changing our policy about, you know, second floors, even though they meet, they, they meet the criteria and they're all legal. But yet, this is what happens when, you know, something happens to the neighborhood and people aren't included and not have an opportunity to feel that they're disenfranchised. Again, this is an emotional issue. We live so, our houses are so close to each other. There's just no way that your other house is not going to be impacted. The planning commission does their best to try to mitigate, mitigate and help the neighbors. Because you're going to live next to this neighbor for a long time, hopefully. So given that, the state does not recognize any easement of sunshine, any easement for privacy, any easement for air. They do not, because you're so close to each other. You share a fence. There's no way. So what the state does allow is, is a prohibition on, on somebody's solar panels. That's the only easement that you get. Otherwise, you have to buy an easement. In other words, you have to buy, if you don't want to have neighbors around you impacting you, you have to buy the properties next to you. And that ensures that you have no privacy or any other impact from your neighbors. That's the only way.
Zuckerberg by the whole block.
Yeah, you can invite, be Zuckerberg, right. So I apologize. It's very emotional. I apologize to the, the appellant, the person who's, who's trying to appeal this process. I know it's very emotional. I apologize to those who weren't notified. And I apologize to the applicant. I just shouldn't have gone on for a whole year. We should have caught this. And I know our staff is trying very hard. I don't, I'm not trying to admonish staff. We're trying, we, we, we have been and have been very short-staffed. And we've been trying to bring our staff up. We've been spending more money, we try to spend more money, and try to improve our systems to be more efficient. So everybody was impacted. And I don't think that, I don't, you know, it's, it's art of compromise. There's not, nobody's, the, the good compromise are the ones that nobody's happy. So I think that I, you know, taking the emotions out, the way I look at it is that all of the process has been followed. Staff has followed all the process, all the proper notifications were went out. The, the, they put in their, they put in their, they got approval before they started building, as far as I can see the timeline from the staff. So I, I'm good with denying the, the appeal. I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay. You know, I, I think all of my questions have been answered to this point. So thank you for clarifying, because there was a lot of confusing information in the staff report. And my views have changed a bit since coming into the room tonight and hearing all of the testimony by both sides. You know, I think it's unfortunate that we are here at this point and, you know, that we did not catch this at the time when it came up. But I thank staff for putting in those procedures in place to make sure that this doesn't happen again. You know, just looking at, you know, the design that we have here that's been presented, it's not, you know, an egregious design that's, you know, a monstrosity that towers over the whole block. It looks like a pretty modest, you know, addition to the house. And just looking at the numbers here, it's well within the, the design guidelines for this area in an R1-zoned neighborhood. Sorry. Lost my train of thought there. But, yeah, you know, it, it looks like everything meets the, the guidelines and it would have, and the planning commission did approve the, the project. And they have seen a lot more of these types of projects, single-family residential remodels. The council rarely sees a project like that. So I do trust the planning commission's judgment on the, you know, on their vote. So, you know, I think this is a project that, you know, will, it, it looks like a lot of the work has already been done. And I think it will mesh nicely with the neighborhood. And hopefully, we all can move on from this and be good neighbors to each other. And not just in this neighborhood, but throughout all of Millbrae. Okay. So it sounds like we had a motion from Councilman Lee. Do you have another comment?
Can we close the public hearing first?
A motion to close the public hearing. I also wanted to just point out that 75, 80% of the homes there have second stories. And most of them are on the right side of the house. This is the only house that doesn't have the second story on the right side, which the, including the, the appellant, they have a second story on the right side. So they're impacting their neighbors with the shadow, and this neighbor is not. So, so I want to point that out.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilman Lee to close the public hearing, and a second from Councilman Schneider. Roll call, vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it for O.
I'll make the motion to deny the appeal.
We have a motion from Councilman Lee to deny the appeal. Is there a second?
The special condition too. Would, would you like to-
I'm sorry.
The, the staff is recommending that they resubmit the application so staff can confirm the 500-foot FAR-
Yes.
How long, how long's this, staff, can you, can, how long's this going to take?
As soon as the applicant can submit that information. It should be within, the planning review should be within just a couple of days.
Yeah, because I'm, it's starting to get cold and I'm pretty sure it's going to, you know, rain pretty soon. So I'd like to get that done. If, so that's option B, right?
No, it's not deny.
Because option A is deny and just uphold the planning commission, which I assume has conditions A and B.
So the upholding, so option A, denying the appeal without prejudice and upholding the planning commission denial included the conditions of approval. And staff is recommending that in addition to that special condition E, that it be modified to ensure that the applicant submit plans that show an addition that's less than 500 square feet. And I think that language is in your-
Right. Because otherwise, it has to go to the planning commission.
That's correct. So special condition E, that was approved by planning commission stated-
Okay. I just think it's frivolous. I think it's, it's not necessary, because otherwise, they're going to have to go to the planning commission. So fine.
Councilman Schneider, do you have a comment or a question on that?
So if they have to go through that, that does not mean that the appellant has another opportunity. This, this is, this is it.
This is it.
This is it. So my only comment would be, and, and I feel very sorry for the applicants, and I wish you the best of luck, because it sounds to me like you're going to get your approval tonight. But I'm going to be voting against it, because all over Millbrae, there have been these projects happening and the city has not, I'm really glad to hear what community development director has said, that we've put some new measures in place. But I'm still hearing from constituents where this is happening to them. So the project's going to go forward. This is my waffle vote. I'm going to vote against it, because I don't want to see this come to us again. And if it has to be that kind of protest vote, then that's-
You're not voting on this subject, then.
Well, but we never, we never talk about it. We never get into those levels of details. And I had been holding and hoping that the general plan would let us get to these details, because we have a lot of single stories going to two stories, and we're going to have more and more of these. And, and, and as the mayor said, you're going to live next to each other. And I wish you the best of luck in living together. But I do believe that the process wasn't good. So that, I'm, I'm the one no, probably the one no vote.
Fair enough. Ms. Cosman, can you reiterate what the recommended motion is?
Okay. So we're going to deny the appeal without prejudice and uphold the planning commission denial of this appeal. And in so doing, we are going to require that the applicant resubmit their application, plan sheets A1 and A3, so we can have a final calculation of the FAR and confirm that the second story addition is 500 feet or less.
That's my motion.
One quick question.
Yes.
So, yes, final question. So can you clarify whether there was any circumventing of the process that, you know, building was going on without a permit? That, an allegation was made as to that effect?
I've heard that allegation, but I can't confirm whether or not that was the case.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Lee. Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. Let's do a roll call. Roll call, vote from the clerk.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Lee. Council, Vice Mayor Pappin.
Aye.
Mayor Hollibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Snyder.
No.
Can you read the?
It passes, the motion to deny the appeal without prejudice and uphold the planning commission's denial of the appeal passes with a vote of three to one, with Councilmember Schneider dissenting.
And the, also the condition of approval?
Plus the condition as previously stated, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is item number 11. This is the appointments to city commissions and committees and discussion regarding the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. Do we have a staff report on this item? It's very short. Let's wait for the room to, to clear here. Just one moment. Okay. So this item is the appointments of the city commission, sorry, appointments to city commissions and committees. We have two recommended appointments from the council subcommittee. They are Barbara Whiteley for the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and Robert Gottschalk for the Sisters Cities Commission. And then we also have a discussion regarding the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, and that came up during council comments from Councilwoman Schneider and Councilman Lee at our previous meeting. Should we first maybe have a motion to approve the two?
Go move.
Okay. So we have- So, we have a motion, I think I heard Councilman Lee first, and would you like to second the motion? And a second from Councilwoman Schneider, this is to appoint Barbara Whiteley to the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, and Robert Gottschalk to the Sister Cities Commission, each for four-year terms. Can we have a vote, please?
Aye.
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 Well, this unanimously passed.
Thank you. Would the subcommittee, either Councilman Schneider or Councilman Lee, like to open the discussion regarding the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee?
You wanna go first?
Well, first, I thank you, Mayor, for putting this on the agenda. I brought this up at council comments two weeks ago, but Mayor, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilman Lee had to leave. So, what I heard Councilman Lee was, let's put this out here so we can talk about it. So, Economic Vitality, like a number of our other committees, has had a hard time achieving quorum. I understood that they did have quorum a week and a half ago, so they got to meet, but over the last couple of years, it's rare that they actually have quorum. So, Councilman Lee and I interviewed a number of candidates. None of them, if I've got this correctly, none of the candidates that we interviewed actually are a, for this set, a business owner in downtown Millbrae. There's one that's a business owner, actually, he didn't make the interview, he works from his home. So, the reason I wanted this, to have this discussion, is I actually agree with Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Wayne, I agree with Councilman Lee, that in a perfect world, all of our downtown economic development people would be business owners or operators downtown, but we haven't been able to get that, that set of applicants, so what do we do? So, we had a couple of applicants who applied for Planning Commissioner, both, two of these have really strong business backgrounds, ran their own businesses, currently run their own business, and this is where I think the councilman and I split. I am willing to look at an applicant that doesn't have a business downtown, but is a business owner, and could perhaps see through the eyes of downtown, for the short period, and I'd even be open to maybe a one-year term, so that we could start getting Economic Vitality meeting often and robustly, and then if we're starting to get more business applicants in there, then we could rotate them in at that one-year time or that two-year time. But that's kind of where I am, and Councilman Lee and I haven't had a chance to go into more detail on that, but I think we're in different places there.
Councilman Lee, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, well, we addressed this about three, four years ago, about not being able to meet and having quorums, and we did not have a quorum last meeting. And the reason why is that they, well, okay, let me, let's do some history first, I think this might help. The reason why this whole committee was formed was for the businesses, because we were using redevelopment money, and we put in these palm trees, and we put in those planters, and we did some work on the sidewalks, and that, and then, so we said, well, before we do that, we should include the businesses, because it's gonna affect them. So, that's where we started, 10, 15 years ago. Since then, the members, and even the chamber at that time, John Ford, said that they've been just going round and round in circles about the same issues, parking, and dirty sidewalks, this keeps going on and on and on, when's the city gonna pay for this, when's the, you know, in other words, when are we taxpayer gonna pay to clean up somebody else's property, basically? So, they started getting, they stopped coming to meeting, because it's just, you know, there was no, there was nothing happening, until we started talking about BID. And so, they're really interested in BID. Now, if we get the BID going, then I think you will see attendance. But, the other thing, too, it's not, it's not about being a perfect world, as you would like to put it, it's about being practical. If you have a whole bunch of people who have no vested interest in the downtown, except that they're interested in shopping there and having a nice downtown, but the business owners aren't, who, the property and business owners who actually affect what goes on downtown aren't at the table, I wonder how much say you're gonna have. These people are gonna, you're gonna end up with the same problem that these citizens who, these good qualified citizens who come to this committee meeting, so, nothing's happening. These property owners and business owners aren't doing it, because they have no buy-in. Business owners, and they're not at the table. So, what are we trying to do? We're just gonna build a, we're gonna build a committee that staff has to staff, and nothing's gonna happen, because the business and property owners aren't there. They're not going to be, there's no buy-in. And, the people who are already there now, who are, who mostly people do attend, are non-business owners.
Vice Mayor Pappan, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I hope we do pursue the business district, but until that time, and they're not meeting quorum, I just don't see how this is useful, but I do think it would be required in the future that the property owners and business owners be a part of any business district that is developed.
You know, I don't know if we necessarily should be, should have that requirement for the committee, but I think, you know, in terms of the council, how we approach making appointments to that committee, I like the idea of having a blend of both people who are currently business owners downtown, and also those who maybe can have, you know, an outside view looking in. As our president has shown, sometimes you need to bring somebody in from the outside to fix what's going on on the inside. That was a joke, by the way. If anybody watching at home. But, no, I think, I think it is useful to have, you know, both lenses, and, you know, obviously, if, if the commission is not making quorum, I think we need to start looking at, you know, are there particular commissioners who are not, you know, repeatedly absent, and maybe should we ask them to, you know, step aside and make room for somebody?
Those are the business owners.
I'm sorry?
Those are the business owners. They're not showing up.
Well, should they be on the commission if they're not showing up?
Well, like I said, you can go ahead and do that, but, you know, you're not gonna have any effect, all you're gonna have is a bunch of people complaining, and the business and property owners will say, so what?
Well, one suggestion that I think has come up before is perhaps changing the meeting time to see if there's a better time for that commission, you know, to make quorum, and maybe, you know, 8:30 on Wednesday mornings isn't the best time. Probably wouldn't be the best time for me, if I were one of the commissioners.
If I'm a business owner, I wouldn't want to, and I have been a small business owner, and I, you know, I have a hard time getting, taking away, getting away during business hours, but, you know, you can try, that's, so if, if all being equal, I prefer to go to a meeting before my business.
That makes sense.
You know, because, no, not, just because you open at 10 o'clock doesn't mean that you open at 10 o'clock. You have to be there to prep, prep your merchandise, to prep your food, you know, whatever, so it's not as simple as, as saying, okay, well, I, you don't, you know, we can have a meeting at 8 o'clock, because you don't open till 10 o'clock, I mean, you don't open till eight, whatever, 9 o'clock, so.
Well, maybe one thing that could be done is, like, some type of an email poll could be sent out, like a doodle poll could be sent to each of the members of the commission to see what would be the best time.
We tried this before, but we can try it again.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not an easy thing to fix if it's not currently working. Councilman Schneider?
When I talked to some of the business owners who had served in the past, I think that they felt that because they, and this comes back to our goals, perhaps, they can comment on reports, a number of the economic vitality people came to the design charrette, but they don't feel like there's an immediate thing for them to do, so why attend a meeting if there's nothing really to do there? We hear the same, I hear the same thing from Culture Arts. If we don't have, if they don't have a real specific project, and they're just coming once a month, and they can talk about things, but if they don't really get to do anything, there's no meet there, there's no sense of satisfaction of getting a job. So, you had talked about two weeks ago of looking at the goals, both high-level and low-level, and maybe one of the things that we can do to fix all of the committees, actually, is to give them some more, a range of goals, because so many of the goals right now are commenting on plans that aren't ready to be commented on. So, you're kind of spinning your wheels, and even the new person that we approved to be on Economic Vitality has told me, why would I give up my very valuable time to sit in a meeting that isn't doing anything? And then, that, again, that's a chicken and egg. If we pushed, if we said, we're gonna, on January 1st, vote for a BID, Business Improvement District, or we're gonna go through the machinations that the property owners have to vote for, legally vote on a BID, then that might get people there, but this committee should be talking about it beforehand. So, at some point, we're gonna have to do something, and I think the meeting doodle thing is a place to start, but maybe we need to give them some real tasks.
Councilman Schneider, you're the liaison to the Cultural Arts Commission in that committee, and that's a committee that hadn't, had been dormant for several years, but now they're starting to work on stuff, and it sounds like with very limited direction from the council or from city staff, they're picking their own projects to work on.
Well, both community enhancement and culture arts, the two that I work with, have, they've got the big picture ones, but they've identified very specific ones, and it's been a painful process through many, many months, and with agreements with Park and Rec, that yes, one can start looking at trees, and Culture Arts was told last night that, no, they can't work on the mural project, but, okay, you can go ahead and start looking at utility projects, and then they actually came up with a third one, which they're gonna come to us with a formal memo on that, and that's having to do with the big blonds, the big blue swimming pool out here that has been sitting empty, that maybe that's something for Culture Arts to actually do a project on public property. But, no, they've had, these have had the same project, problems, not, they need more specific projects. I think it really comes to that.
Well, I agree with you, and I think all the members feel that this committee should morph into a BID, and they've been working, trying to get a BID, and because there hasn't been any movement in the BID, and that's the one project they want to do, because they want to make sure that the property owners and the business owners are involved. And without them, you got, you know, you really have, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but, just like the old saying goes, you don't have to drink.
Well, you know, I'm just looking at their agenda from their last meeting on September 27th, I don't, I don't know if they actually held a meeting or not.
No.
They did not.
No, I was there, no.
I'm sorry, because it was reported out of community enhancement that they did meet.
That's correct. I was there at the meeting. Economic Vitality Committee did meet last month, it was the first meeting where we had quorum, and they, they adopted their bylaws and their work plan, and we also, we, we had the chair and vice chair selection, and we also had the nomination for the member and alternate for the Community Center Rebuild Committee.
This is what, November?
Last month.
November 27th, Wednesday, two weeks ago.
I guess I wasn't at that meeting, so.
That's correct.
And that's really fabulous, really, really glad that they have taken many big steps, then.
Okay. I mean, I guess the question would be, you know, A, are we gonna do, shall we do something to try to, you know, get more participation, whether that's changing the meeting time, or getting some new people, getting some people out and some new people in? Or the other option is, I think there are, I don't know how many vacancies, there's one vacancy, you know, perhaps at a subsequent meeting, we could, you know, review the applicants and make a selection to fill that vacancy?
Oh, I, like I said, I'm, I really think that we have enough citizens, we need more business and property owners on that committee. That's my view.
Yes, Vice Mayor Pappan?
Okay, we've got one suggestion on polling for the new time, I think that's a good idea, since they did meet and they actually did do something. As a third suggestion, we keep talking about a BID, how about if the council just sends a message that, you know, that's what you want, if that's what you want, you know, what you would expect, what the council needs to determine, what they would expect from a BID, and what they hope to get out of it, and, you know, that then sends a big message to the property owner members, that it's time to show up, and it's time to get your two cents in here, so.
And is, I'm sorry, Ms. Ward, sincere, is the BID part of their work plan for 2017, 2018 that they discussed?
It's not in our work.
I don't have the work plan in front of me, but I don't believe that actual task is identified. They do have roles in economic development and in coordinating with business owners that maybe can be construed, but that's not a specific task that I recall.
Can I, can I suggest that if you're polling for the time and location, that you also tell them that the council, if I'm correct, would like to send the message that we would like to pursue a BID and what their thoughts are on that?
Staff can do that.
Am I speaking, I don't want to speak for everyone.
I would say, do we, I know it's not on the agenda, but I like what the vice mayor has said, I'd just be wording it stronger. It's time.
Yeah, that's something we've been discussing for several years now. And then, as for the appointment of the final, to fill the final vacancy?
So moved.
Well, we don't have a recommendation, so is.
I like your idea, if, if, if the committee goes and does that work and sends out something talking about the BID, maybe that will get us an actual business owner. Then the question is, do we, of the current makeup, we've got, we've got business owners, but they lease their property, so do we want a landowner down there?
Can I suggest that this also go out to the Chamber of Commerce, and that way it might enlighten some people that are unaware of this committee, and may, it even gets people showing up to the committee, they don't necessarily have to be a member, but.
Chamber used to be a member, they used to show up, they don't show up anymore. So, the, I mean, I, you know, I mean, you could, the BID, in order for a BID to happen, you have to have champions from the business community, you need to have some people in the business community.
Well, I think sending a message is going to enlighten them to wake up and participate.
Well, okay, I just think it can also be that they don't want to have a bunch of outsiders telling them what to do, but, you know, so it's best to try to get them into this committee than to have somebody outside telling them, you know, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, and then you know what they're gonna say.
You know, I think you have to start the discussion, get it going, like any committee, they're not going to be able to decide the BID. The Arts Committee is not going to be, you know, just say, go do what you want with the fountain. These committees make recommendations to the council, and things are decided from there, but it sounds like unless we send a message, this is what we're looking for, nothing's gonna happen.
Well, I think they, yeah, I think it's good that they approved the work plan, didn't they?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, the question is, the work plan is to, part of it is to support the economic development and to work on the BID, isn't that correct?
I don't know if the task of the BID is in there, but.
It is, actually. Under, it's under the Implement Downtown Economic Development Plan. One of the steps is, steps to completion is participate in development of a Business Improvement District. So, that's right there in their work plan, and, you know, if.
What I'm saying is.
If the commission desires, they can put that on the agenda for next week, you know, for their next meeting.
I think we should send a direct message that they emphasize that, and.
Well, no, no, I understand what you're saying, they're already on board with it. People are on board, what we really need is the business, this business people to get on board.
Well, that's what I think, if an announcement goes out to the chamber, and please have them notify their membership that this is what this committee will be working on, and this is the time they're gonna be meeting, we'll see if we get a little more excitement.
So, maybe should we review applications in like a couple of months, maybe?
Well, I refer back to the subcommittee in. I really like the people who applied, but like I said, the only thing they don't have is that they're not a business owner, or a property owner, downtown property owner.
I would only say, the one applicant who couldn't make the interview, but he made the Planning Commission interviews, he works from home, he's a lifer here in Millbrae, born and bred, and he works on helping brick and mortar businesses enter e-commerce. So, he doesn't have a shop downtown, but his business is to try to help, help small retail or big retail sell in an e-commerce world. That's why when we didn't choose some of the Planning Commissioners, we made the recommendation, or we went forward and tried to see if we could fit them into economic development. So, he doesn't have a store, but he's got what I think could be a skill set that could help a lot of our, a lot of our few remaining retail businesses in Millbrae, especially the little guys.
So, let's refer that back to the subcommittee, I think, unless the subcommittee would like that to be agendized as an item for the full council.
Well, I'm okay with it coming back. We still, we had so many young people apply for the two or three remaining seats of Youth Commission. I think we interviewed 15 kids, and we're already back into the school year, so we have, the subcommittee has to meet again to figure out which kids. to figure out which kids.
Yeah, we had, we had three high school kids and two, two middle schoolers, and one of the middle schoolers, only he attended because his mom made him do it. And the, one of the other ones, and then there was one other, one other middle schooler is, goes to school in the Highlands, so is not really involved.
So, so perhaps we can, you know, in the very near future, we can contact the Chamber of Commerce to solicit additional applications for that commission, particularly from downtown business owners and property owners. Okay, so that is it for new business, now we go on to council comments, let's begin with Councilman Lee.
I don't really have anything.
Okay, Councilman Schneider?
I actually have something really exciting. Airport noise roundtable basically is having people kind of yell at you because the airplanes make a lot of noise, but the good news is SFO has been listening, and they have now set aside of their own, without any screaming yet, a million dollars a year to work on insulation programs for the homes within the 65 decibel area, the contour. Now, that could include homes that were done in the past, but those insulation projects have failed. So for example, our house was in, I think, the old 65 decibel, and a number of those windows have failed, but throughout the area from Foster City up to Brisbane, it's a chance for some people slowly, it's only 20 houses a year, but the insulation program is back, it's back on the work table, and there's actually a bill in Congress right now that looks at all of the airports and are revisiting soundproofing. It won't help you during, it won't help you for gardening, won't help you washing the car, but it'll help you potentially get to sleep at night, so, big change there. Really quickly, the turkey trot that was mentioned earlier, the Meadows Turkey Trot, is Sunday, November 19th, the Millbrae Lions have their marinated crab feed on a very popular day, October 21st, and I met a number of people at the Japanese festival who think, well, we don't eat crabs, so we don't come. Everyone should know, this is the Lions' major, major fundraiser, and it is crab, this one's marinated crab, but there's also pasta, and there's also huge Pape's Meat Market steaks. So if you're not someone who likes crab, please join us, or please join the Lions for that fundraiser, and that is October 21st at St. Dunstan's, and there's pasta for the vegetarians.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so here, is it here at City Hall? In the lobby, there is a Halloween costume design, or drop-off for kids who can't afford costumes, and I think it's happening throughout the county, so I highly encourage anyone who's got some costumes out there that some kids might enjoy, Halloween's coming up, pardon? Brand new, I'm sorry, brand new costumes that the kids might enjoy. Are you guys done? In addition to that, I will remind everyone, the fires that have happened recently, why it is so important that you please go on the city website or the county website and get the alerts on your phone, on your email, they will call you at home if an emergency does happen. Also was announced that sometimes the phone lines are just too busy, it is actually easier and safer to send a text. Also, if you are put into a position where people are trying to contact you, if anything like that would happen in this area, you can change your voicemail to say, hey, I'm okay and where you are, which is a good thing to know, since people are trying to find loved ones, and it's really a difficult situation. So I encourage you, please, to sign up for the county alerts, you can get alerts for Millbrae or wherever else in the county here. And I believe the mayor's going to be closing in honor of Carolyn Livinggood, who was just a wonderful community advocate and did so many great things, one of the most things I think she was most proud of is the Golden Gate Cemetery, getting the gate and the surroundings to be something we can all be proud of. She is a great loss to our community, and also Chris Palace, who served on the San Bruno City Council for many, many years, passed away, and I believe the services are Thursday and Friday. So, I'm sorry if I took your message there, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for bringing that up. So, yeah, I attended the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group meeting a couple weeks ago, we had a presentation on the progress of the modernization program, we actually had a presentation here a couple of meetings ago about that. There's actually a survey, online survey right now regarding the electric train design, so feel free to go take a look at that survey and give your, your input. They are going to have space underneath the seats for folding bikes, which hopefully should help to alleviate a little bit of the bike crowding that they have on Caltrain, but they still will have quite a bit of space for bikes as well. And then also, along with the people who we, who we lost recently, we'd also like to give our thoughts to Ian Morris and his family, his father, Robert Morris, a Millbrae resident who was hit by a car last week at Taylor and El Camino, I believe, and our thoughts are for a full recovery for him. So, thank you all, and we will adjourn, actually go to closed session right now. So, thank you, everyone, good night.